All right, everybody, I'm going to call the special joint meeting of the City Council and the Finance Advisory Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Carson.
Here.
Smith.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor. Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Five present.
And Smith, McAdams, and Favor reached out ahead of time letting us know they wouldn't be able to be here. Go ahead.
Ms. Scott, would you please call the roll for us? Thank you.
Babcock.
Here.
Briscoe.
Here.
McGill. Neely.
Here.
Harch.
Here.
Terzinski.
Here.
Washington. Five present.
Awesome. Moving on to Agenda Item C, Public Participation. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Nope. All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, Consideration of the Proposed FY 2023 Budget. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. That's all we need. No roll call, right? Beautiful. All right, City Manager, you want to kick us off?
I do. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. Good evening. For the Finance Advisory Committee, this is your third chance to talk about some of the essentials of the city's annual budget. For the council, this is your second time. And so, in the past, what I've done as sort of a leader of the discussion is to take us through, and we're all flipping pages, flipping pages, flipping pages, which we may end up doing, it's your pleasure. But what I like to do is take this section by section and go deeper if you so choose. And if not, we move to the next section. If that's agreeable to you, I'll get going.
Sounds great.
All right. So, a few advertisements or commercial statements here. This budget, as you might guess, is not just the work of a person sitting in the corner office at City Hall. It's the work of many hands, some of which you see in the room here tonight. I'm particularly grateful for the assistance of Kerry Didman, our new finance director. Those of you who've been around here for a while know that since February of 2019, we haven't had a full-time finance director. And we achieved that goal in January of this year. And Kerry has been exceptional in her assistance and in the work that she's provided. And some of the work that she's provided is evident in your budget. There are some more, there's more attention given to projections, comparisons, metrics. And we'll get better as we go along, but in the time that we had. And this is a process that begins in earnest in June, and at this point is wrapping up five months later. So it's an abiding responsibility of many people. But again, Kerry, I appreciate your time. Ruth Scott, your time for coordinating meetings and keeping yours truly sort of on an even keel through all this process. And department heads, all of you know your departments best. And we've had many individual meetings and some joint meetings to talk about where we need to be, what we need in a way of operational requirements for personnel and so forth. So, again, thank you. The budget document that you have before you, and I think everybody has a hard copy, and you're aware that it's been up on the city's website and posted for some time now, begins with a transmittal letter. And that's my opportunity to try to speak, not to you necessarily, but to residents and businesses of the City of DeKalb, or anybody who goes on our internet and is looking, well, what kind of, sir, what's this place like? What are the priorities? What are the principal occupations of the people that serve in city government? And so that was my objective, and it can be judged in that sense. We've talked about this before. We're here to serve. We're not here just to do our business and hope that people like it. But we have to be responsive. And we have to be, I think, in the budget particularly transparent and also very readable, so that the widest possible audience that may not have a background in finance or accountancy can understand what we're doing. So there's a lot of pictures, there are a lot of graphs and charts, and quite a lot of narrative here to try to spell out in a very general way what it is that tax dollars, local and state and federal, are doing to help us achieve these services. So, with that said, the transmittal goes into some detail on the general fund, and also, as we talked about in October with the Finance Advisory Committee, a couple of our key capital funds, also the water fund. So that should not be a surprise to the Finance Advisory Committee. I hope if you have any questions, please interrupt me at any time, members of council. A couple of things have changed, but not much. One thing is that right after the October 19th, within a week of the October 19th meeting with the Finance Advisory Committee, we got another estimate from DeKalb County about what our EAV might be. And at that point, we were shooting around $768,500,000, give or take a couple bucks. And our new estimate that we have in the budget for calculation of ultimately by every individual property taxpayer, their, what their obligation is going to be, is $780 million. And that was what we thought was a good stopping point until about a week ago, when this is already decked out and on the way toward you. We got the scent of some additional EAV, but that's probably preferable than my talking. But showing an abundance of caution, I'm not presenting that to you tonight. Why? So far this year, interestingly, because the multiplier is going to be 6.62% for residents and businesses in DeKalb County, everybody is going to see an increase in their property unless they appeal. And the appeals have been significant and abundant to this point. I get a copy through Ruth's office of every appeal that comes for the city government taxes or obligation in particular. So, there are a couple large firms, I don't want to be specific, but you probably guessed, that are in the South Industrial Park, the Chicago West Business Park, that have just received their notices, since there's a new assessed valuation is now coming to them for the first time. And the projected EAV is so enormous, if we overstate where we're going to be, we'll be surprising a lot of people. So my recommendation, which through the various pages in the budget, is that we stick at $780 million. That's a very significant increase. It also has an impact on what we project to be the obligation that will be faced by the average homeowner. I don't know what that is. We've been using a house, we could have started at $150,000, we went a little higher net, $300,000, so an EAV of $100,000 to start about four years ago when we started this little exercise. You have a copy at your seat. Looks like this. And with a levy that the Finance Advisory Committee recommended and which the council has also supported and which is in the ordinance that will be heard on first reading a week from tonight of $7,119,000 and change, the city's rate accounting for the multiplier would be .91271. The library rate is not so significant to anybody tonight, that's not what we're talking about, but this is a presentation we made last week. If we were to keep the same rate as last year, which was .98612, the impact on individual homeowner would be more significant in terms of out-of-pocket taxes paid. What we have in the budget would actually amount to a savings of about $10 for that large house. For, if we were just a flat line rate from last year, and we talked about this a little bit at the last FAC meeting, the average homeowner, according to this example, would be paying $70 out-of-pocket. So, just so you know, and the council's talked about this many times in this room in the last six months, the mayor intends to send out a call, basically, to the principal elected and appointed officials in each of the local taxing bodies for a meeting sometime in January. We've kind of missed this wave now. But for next year to get ahead of things so that they can all participate in what they think our targeted collective or aggregate rate ought to be for our community. And it would be hard to lead that conversation if our out-of-pocket taxes for our services would go up. Mayor, did you want to?
No, you're absolutely right. And the reason we want to get the letter out now, obviously, they're going to decide on their levies before our January meeting. But trying to get all the taxing bodies together, have this conversation is impractical before they're actually going to do their truth in taxation and establish what their rates are going to be. My hope is putting this out in front of them is going to at least get them to question where our rates at, look at what the City of DeKalb is doing, and hopefully follow our lead in greatly trying to reduce our tax rate from 11.1 right now down to 9.6 in the next two, three years. So that's what that meeting in January is going to be about. Hopefully, this letter is going to trigger some taxing bodies, if not all of them. Because when you look at the amount of EAV that has come in, I think it's every taxing body's responsibility to finally, finally give back to the taxpayer. And they can do that in form of reduction of the tax rate. And their levies will still go up in the process.
I will say, interestingly, just by coincidence for our talk tonight, there was a DeKalb County EDC meeting today, it's Executive Committee, representatives of all local tax bodies that are there, basically. And I'm very pleased to say that the county administrator spoke exactly what you're saying, what I've been saying. And I talked to him after the meeting, and he said he would be delighted to show up. And it looks like their out-of-pocket tax portion is going to go down this year. No small part because of the tremendous increases in EAV in the business parks in the south side of town. So, he was complimenting to the city and also urged everybody to take this seriously. This is a transformative moment for the City of DeKalb. Now, we have some structural problems, which I'll get to shortly, that are unique to us and for us to solve. But this is something we can only solve with the participation and the support of the other taxing bodies if we're going to lower one of the five key factors in attracting new business. And for that matter, new families, people are coming here to start a new life and the rest. Okay. All right, let's dive in. Yes?
Before you continue, I just wanted to point out, for those of you at the FAC meeting that we had in October, you saw a presentation that looks like this. That was based on the original estimated EAV of the $768,500 that Bill was referring to. That's the back page. And that was what was put in the transmittal letter. The top page shows the new $780 million EAV. So the items in yellow, basically, are the changes, just to highlight what Bill was saying, how the rate has now, based on $780 million, the rate has decreased to .91271, which is a 7.44% decrease from last year. And the effect of the homeowner, as he noted, with that roughly $320,000 market value home, is like a $10 savings over last year. So just another kind of presentation based on what you've seen at the previous meeting with updated numbers now.
Okay. In the transmittal letter, just a couple other things to point out. The five-year forecast that we presented to the Finance Advisory Committee is there, and members of council, that's on page 10 in the transmittal letter. And it gives you an idea of where we've been. And then on page 11, where we may be in terms of overall fund balance in the general fund. And the general fund is important for many reasons. One, for the sake of our constituents, it's the one fund out of 29 that touches them the most. It funds the activities of our operations, and that's what they connect with, whether it's fire, police, public works, planning, even administration. So, I hope that that has caught your eye, and we intend to have more projections as you go through this. We'll see what we're looking at. I think I should just sum up, because I'm usually asked at this meeting, where are we? Are all the funds reporting a balanced budget? And they are. The summation of where we're going to be with fund balance at the end of the year and where we'll be at the end of the coming year is on page 17 for you. Each of the 29 funds is shown there, including the library fund, pension funds, and everything in between, large and small. Questions? Let's move into the community we serve. This is a chapter that has been, I think, improved. It's up to you to decide whether it's improved. Certainly, it's changed a little bit. It's the meat and potatoes of, again, somebody looking on the website, trying to figure out about this place called DeKalb. It's not Georgia, it's Illinois. And what do we know about this place? So, some of the economic, demographic questions that are often asked of a community are answered, hopefully, here. But we also, as you know, went through a financial planning process last winter and culminated in a joint meeting with the Finance Advisory Committee to discuss the financial plan for 2022, 2023, 2024. And some of those comparables that we did and some benchmarking factors are replayed here. We've updated some of them as numbers have become available to us. And you also see on page... Well, I'll let you, if you have any questions on this, we can walk through it. But then there's basically a presentation that hopefully the GFOA will be looking at or looking for. And I want to thank Kerry for this, who has an eye to this based on her many years of auditing experience. On page 42, it says, "General Fund Long Range Financial Plan." So, this points out some of the things left to do. And you're never done in this field. And we put our shovel in the ground, and now it's time to keep going, both in the general fund area, and we can do this by department, we can do it by the overall fund. We can also do this in terms of capital funds and the water funds. And we intend to embark on that this year. Stay tuned, we'll have some kind of a description of what might work, and we'll take that to the council, hopefully, in the first quarter or so. The audit starts in earnest right after the first of the year. But Barry's, Kerry, and others in finance, by the end of the first quarter and the second quarters, is a lot of work related to that. Third quarter, all of a sudden, right after July 1st, and the presentation here of the audit, we're right away into the budget process. So I think the time to do is in the first two quarters. And that's what we hope to do. But maybe even bigger than this, we need to do something we haven't done in five years, and that's a strategic plan. The one that we have expires in 2025. But if you've still got it and you've looked at it recently, you won't recognize where we are today compared to where we thought we'd be. Five-year plans in this current planning environment, if you're in municipal government, are not typically real accurate after about the second year. Like, who, there's nothing in a plan about COVID. There's nothing in a plan about the recession we're in, or the strong recovery from COVID, for that matter. So, and we're going to have some more of that. And we're still fighting with a structural problem, which we've talked about, I'm not going to belabor tonight. But we've talked about the downstate pension challenges that we have. And in the transmittal letter, you can see a little more detail than you saw at the Finance Advisory Committee meeting in mid-October. But it's basically the same challenge for us, and that is to work with other municipalities, work with the Illinois Municipal League, the Association of Firefighters of Illinois, the state legislature, our legislators, to come up with a better way of calculating the risk and the obligations. And there are models out there, and we hope to engage the legislature on that topic very soon.
Before we move on to Section 3, I think this was maybe the page you were looking for, Bill. I just wanted to call attention to, on page 27 and 28, this really kind of hammers home the efforts that the city has made in regards to the tax rates, and the efforts as far as getting information to the other taxing bodies, and collectively what has been accomplished over the last seven years or so. If you look at the top of page 27, there's a little chart there showing since 2015, the dramatic drop in overall tax rates that both the city and the other taxing bodies have achieved. And you can kind of see in that, the table right below it, just the exact rates from the last three years and where, how we've dropped. And then on page 28, this is then the push for the future. So, between '22's tax rate, '23 and '24, where the city had targeted to be, with the choices that we've been making, and getting that overall rate down even further to that kind of 9.6, 9.5% range. So, I think you may have been, you may have moved to that.
That's what I was looking for. I went right over it. One thing to keep in mind, when we're at $13.25 a hundred EAV, our competitors, Geneva St. Charles, North Aurora, Batavia, da-da-da-da, Sycamore, we're all somewhere around seven and a half, eight. So, there is a little bit of this convergence happening. What we don't, what we don't mind doing is getting at least to that breakpoint or a little bit lower. But we have no way of knowing if they're going to come up dramatically or just kind of very easily. And as long as there is a gap, we are at a disadvantage, not only in providing incentives to people because we have to give a large part of what we'd love to be able to control and keep from the way of property tax away. And right now, we can't afford to give anything away because we're putting it all in some other place in operation. So, okay. Section 3 is remodeled. This is the cabin that's now a palace. Well, it's not quite a palace, but it's looking a lot better. And it's something that in our annual review by the GFOA, it's something that they have been harping on and looking at, I shouldn't say harping on, but have been identifying as an area that we really have to change. And so, if you want to know not only about our budget process, but if you want to understand our fund structure, and if you go over to page 54, those of you who have taken the time to read through our annual audit are familiar with pages that look like this. Here's the advantage which I absolutely love. If you looked in that audit, for the most part, you won't see these categories laid out like this, which, by the way, align with how we lay out our categories and have traditionally for many years in our budget. You'll see some mixing, you know, there's going to be, this or that fund explanation. And you have to go back and forth to find out where we are and how we compare with previous years. This should help any reader understand where our principal funds are in terms of revenues and expenditures. And do it by categories that, if you wanted to go further back into...
Can you keep calling out page numbers as you skip around?
Yeah. So, you start on page 54, and you're going to go through 60. And then spritz up in the pie charts that we're used to seeing. These have a little more detail and a little easier way of reading what the slices all are. So hopefully, that's helpful to you.
Just to elaborate on that, 54 to 57 is each individual fund of the city, one year. So just the annual 2023 budgeted amounts, revenue expenditures, and then the changes in fund balance. The other schedule on pages 58 through 60 is a three-year presentation that's required by GFOA for the city's major funds. So the city's major funds includes the general, the transportation, TIF 1, the water, three funds together, and the airport. So each of those, on an individual basis, shows three years' worth of trend data. And then all the other aggregated non-major funds are presented in total on page 60. So it's just kind of a different way of presentation.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Section 4, now we're getting to general fund detail. And if you see on page 64 and in the pages that follow, the next four or five pages, you'll see a progression which we haven't, you'd have to read through a number of budgets to get this presented as crisply as it is now. And I think that's useful in terms of our essential revenue streams for the general fund. Also, as you go further, and then you get into some traditional data pages on 70 and 71, as you get into the expenditures, and you get to page 73 and 74 and following, you see the same kind of charting in terms of our major categories of expense. Hopefully, that shows, you know, what's our trend line, or are we breaking trend, or, and what are the factors behind that. Hopefully, the narrative is explanatory and walks you through that. Also, on page 79, we see a little bit of a progression in terms of the spending by department, both in the current fiscal year and in what we project for the next fiscal year and what the changes are. One thing that you already are aware of, and we talked to Finance Advisory Committee about this, we've talked to council about it, and that is that we have consciously and purposefully sought to increase our, you know, this year and next year and last year in public safety, our personnel, for different reasons. In public works, we had, in the 2000s and 2010s, not refilled a lot of positions. So we were to a point where we didn't have enough people to hop in the plow trucks that we needed on a regular basis. Andy and his crews have for a long time had the town divided up into what seemed to be the most expeditious way to get things cleaned and as fast as possible, starting with the arterials and working down from there. We've filled that, but not extravagantly. We've hired three in the last four years, one projected for next year, one of those three. In fire, last year was the big year in the first part of this year. We got the SAFER grant, which was a three-year grant. And that, and what we've been able to do with, you know, savings. And the ARPA money helped us not only refill the boot, which was down about $4.5 million in losses from COVID, but to be stable again, above and beyond. We've filled frozen positions now. And then we did one other thing that we had to do. It was mandatory, we had to do it. We got ahead of the game by a year. And that was to create, go from what was something that, I have to admit, I had my hand in in the 90s when we didn't have money. And that was to create, go from what was something that I have to admit, I had my hand in in the nineties when we didn't have money. And we did this two and two. And you've heard me talk about this before. Two on an engine, two on an ambulance. Theoretically, every time there's a fire call, the ambulance and the engine showed up at the same, same time, and you had four people on the fire ground. Correct me if I'm wrong here. Theoretically, start dragging hose and so forth. But what if, and this has happened so often, it's happened as, as our calls increase, where we're becoming kind of the first line medical service for a lot of our residents now. What if that ambulance is not trailing? So the engine gets there with two. You can't fight a fire with two. Even if you wanted to, you can't. You gotta have somebody, you gotta have an engineer. We don't send, I guess to save a life, somebody's hanging from a window, we'd send one person in with that inch and a half hose or two-inch hose. But it's not effective. And if you have multi, a traffic accident with three ambulances on the scene, then we're really, it's going to be a, instead of a five-minute response, it's going to be a ten-minute response or worse. We talked about this at length for three or four months in the fall of twenty and into twenty-one. And before there was ARPA, and before there was the SAFER grant, the council and with my strong recommendation decided. We've, we've got to change this. And the NFPA and others were pressing on us to do just that. So we did that, and now they're, they're on full time now, and that adds, of course, to our bottom line. Police Department, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong here. So with the strong urging of the council, we have been trying to get to a threshold of seventy officers, warrant officers. That includes Jason, the command staff, the chief, and then sergeants and the patrol officers. And we take a couple steps forward and one back just because we've had a lot of retirements. We've had, it's not been so easy getting people on a hiring list, so sometimes we have to wait an inordinate amount of time. So just when we think we're making progress and somebody retires and we can't fill that because we don't have a list that's current anymore, you start going down a list and people don't respond. Or they say, I've, I've had a job for three months in someplace else. So we're going to get to seventy this year. That's in this budget. Also in this budget is a two and a half percent wage increase pretty much across the board. That's what was in the contracts. It's, everybody knows the environment we're in. People are taking a hit right now in terms of household incomes, and we thought that was, that was appropriate. Where are we a year from now, two years from now? That's, we do more planning on that, and we like to get ahead of that. But that's where we are. That's why the budget has a pretty darn good big bump here. And of course, that has pension implications, there's no doubt about it. So we have to also set aside more, as we hire more people, we have a higher pension obligation. Those are the main trends in the general fund this year. That and trying to do something about the increasing obligation for downstate fire police pensions. Questions? Okay, you can see each department portrayed in Section Four. We have organizational charts for each. Pictures, description. Each, each department has the principal achievements of the current year and the principal objectives of FY twenty-three. So unless you want me to stop, just keep going. Section Five, let's move from the general fund to our special funds. And so you'll want to go to page one fifty-six.
Yeah, one fifty-seven.
One fifty-six.
Yeah.
So there are quite a few special funds here. This is a breakout of the funds that have a special, sometimes a statutory guideline, which created them and also defines their use. And we've, we've got the American Rescue Plan Act, the GEM-T fund, which currently is getting monies, you've heard this before, for Medicaid patients only, that pay, it comes from the federal government, pays the gap between what we're able to charge, which might be a hundred and thirty dollars per call for our actual out-of-pocket costs, which is up to two thousand dollars. That's if there are no extras, no extraordinary, picking somebody up or transporting that person. And en route, we're not doing extraordinary medical procedures to keep a person breathing and so forth. And this doesn't include going beyond, you know, the delivery of the patient. So that money, most all of that gap now is coming to us through this GEM-T fund or program. And we park that in a unique fund that is now our source of capital for the really big-ticket fire department equipment and vehicle costs, which otherwise just get on lists and don't, and for many, many years, just couldn't be afforded. Replacing a fire engine, replacing an ambulance, replacing our breathing apparatus. And all these things have a life, like, you know, other vehicles and equipment. But in our case, in order to remain certified, we have to, we have to hold to those. And one of those is, you know, if the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Agency says that we've, we're past the useful life, we're past the useful life. We were right within a year on the breathing apparatus and the machine that creates the oxygen that fills the bottles. And we decided we had to do that. GEM-T, thank you, is paying for that. We have two fire engines this year that we have set aside the money for. We received one, received one in two thousand twenty-three, and it'll come out of two thousand twenty-three. And there's another large item on the agenda for Monday, a large vehicle that otherwise could not have been afforded at this time. So that's very valuable to us. I wish we had that for all of our departments. We don't. Applause for our department. Transportation Fund, let's just take a minute and look at that. So the Transportation Fund, we don't talk a lot about this. The council sees from time to time reports that will be focused on a particular item, like recently it was the Transit Center. If you go to page one sixty-one and the several pages that follow, this is a highly subsidized fund. The federal government pays most of the money into this fund. We have a local match from the NIU for, for a contribution from NIU. Those two together are about six million for the state of Illinois, which they, they get money from the federal government. Two million for the local match from NIU for the buses that principally carry students from place to place on campus. There are some other operating assistance grants. There are some special grants. The biggest so far has been the, the grants for our Transit Center, six and a half million dollars for that, and then some other smaller grants. Very little in the way of actual fare revenue, just doesn't pay much, fifty, sixty grand, something like that a year. So the allocation in FY twenty-three is going to be somewhere around seventeen million. A lot of that goes toward the planning and design for the Transit Center that we've talked about here.
And just to further elaborate on that, the fund actually is, is in balance between revenues and expenditure. So all of the operations of that fund are going to come out of, like Bill said, either a federal or a state grant or a little bit of the NIU's contribution. So it's a, it's a net change of zero overall.
Okay, special service areas, we've talked about those here before. There, there's not a large amount of spending that comes out of them, but there are two in particular that, that I think have been important and timed. The Market Square Special Service Area, just this year, we saw the repaving of many of the commercial lanes in, in that large commercial subdivision. And I'm glad that we were able to, to get that done. Hunter Ridge Brook, there's money there to help with the new ownership and management of that particular complex. Very large complex that needed a lot of work and still does. So there is some money there to be used for the exterior of that complex. And after the SSAs, we go to the TIF funds. We replayed the number one, the TIF number one fund just last year. We, for all intents and purposes, terminated the fund. We kept just under twenty thousand dollars in that fund. So we kept the fund open in case there were tax appeal rulings that came out here in the last year. There haven't been any. We're not aware of any coming up, but we're, we're going through one more appeals season. And at the end of January, we should know where we stand. If there's nothing, then that money gets ported over to TIF III, where it can be put to use to council's pleasure going forward. TIF III is just a fraction of what TIF I was in terms of annual income and geographic area. But it's been pretty productive in terms of small grants, up to, up to twenty-five thousand. Oftentimes they're less than that for facades, for some repairs to make front doors and bathrooms accessible, some electrical, some plumbing, some emergency roof repairs and the like. And that's principally a downtown geographic area. Although the west side is bounded roughly by the, the Kitchwaki River Bridge at the lagoon. Two blocks either side going east until you get to Seventh Street, and then it kind of filters out. It's not a very long TIF, and it just follows Lincoln Highway. We call that the downtown TIF III. So we had a few projects. We have, at this point, we meet quarterly with all the other local taxing bodies that contribute to that TIF, which is unusual in this state. Usually it's an annual meeting. But we went through heck and back in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty for the sins of others. And, and we are now at a point where we have very good communication. Everything is immensely transparent in terms of finances. And we're, we're pleased with where we are. Will it be as productive as we'd like? Probably not. But in there are areas that we don't have anymore under a TIF regimen, like where DIMCO is, where the northeast quadrant from Seventh, north of Lincoln Highway and east of Seventh Street all the way to Peace Road. That was, that was to be the heart of our tax increment district going back to nineteen eighty-six. It needs a lot of work still. We've got the GE plant, and there's a new ownership there. So we'll do what we can. Also, the airport was in our TIF I, and this has crimped our ability to make more rapid progress towards some improvements at the airport, but we're, we're just going to keep doing it. All right. Any questions about, we have a CDBG fund, a Community Development Block RAMP fund. That's on pages one eighty-one and one eighty-two. It's been very helpful in, in supporting underserved residents within our community. It's a federally funded program. We got this year somewhere around, other, some surplus money. So we got a fresh contribution of a little over five hundred thousand, and we had some carryover funds from a previous year. You're allowed to carry over for a couple of years if you're on the track toward a purpose that is defined under HUD rules. And a lot of that has to be spent by the end of twenty-three. So roughly on an annual basis, about a half a million dollars is what comes through here for-
Since you just mentioned it, the Mayor's, Northern Illinois Mayor's Association, I was just at. They said the CDBG went from five hundred and fifty thousand up to one point five million now we can apply for. I don't know if that was, we're aware of that at this point. I'm assuming Joanne's all over it, and you're all over it.
Yeah, we actually, you're going through another, every, every year this time, we're putting together a proposal, a package for the council, which hits you in January. It's, this year are going to be a new four-year plan and a one-year plan for FY twenty-three. So you'll, you'll have lots to dig into, take a look at. Hopefully by then, we'll know for sure where we are with the federal funding. We had a considerable amount of extra funding during the COVID pandemic, but we haven't seen that since. Housing Rehab Fund is, by now, which it could have enrolled into something else, was CDBG or something like, like that. But the monies in here were set up through another federal program, the Community Development Assistance Program, CDAP. Maybe some of you've worked with that in the past. It's a program that did a lot of property rehab and for low to moderate income families, not just insulation, but major rehabbing and remodeling. That program from the federal government ended in the late eighties. But the monies that were used in revolving loan program that have piecemeal come back to us, or the long-term loans, can't be used for anything else but that same purpose. So there's, there's some money, about seventy grand in here. We can't just say, let's put that into some other useful purpose. It has to stay there and be used for the same purpose. It has been used for some demolitions when there is a, maybe a house fire that devastated a small home somewhere and it would, it would otherwise comply. But that's been a few years since we were able to do that. Questions? Section Six, Debt Service Fund. Thanks, this is a, I thought this is the most fun thing that, one of the most fun things that Kiri added to the budget this year. On page one eighty-eight.
If you can make debt fun, right?
Well, if you can make it fun, yeah.
Seeing it go down is fun.
Oh, yeah.
I really like the little check box.
It's a good, it's a good view using the fiber, we just show five categories that, because we're a whole world community, we're not bound by some of the same criteria that other communities are in terms of what your legal debt margin might be. But here we, we show, we break it down. We're looking really good. It's not only that we're not anywhere near the maximum limits, but we're coming down. And at the end of the next eight to ten years, we're, we'll be debt-free. And I dare say, until we solve our property tax issue with the state and the downstate pensions, we're not going to be in a very good position to borrow money with the general obligation bond, with our full faith and credit tied up into property tax. It's just not, not in the cards. So when, when it is time, man will be ready to go.
So just to expand on that, what is in this particular area of the budget is excerpted from the actual debt service policy that the city adopted. So out of the financial policies, these are the metrics that the city has determined are important to follow. So this is just highlighting that these are the things that the city has imposed upon itself for debt compliance. And in fact, the city is actually in compliance with all of them. So it's kind of giving ourselves credit for the work that we've, that we've done in that, in that area.
At a glance, you can see what the remaining debt service is on page one ninety, each of the outstanding bonds that we have.
And those two schedules, they're the same debt. The first one shows by actual bond issuance, when they mature. The 2010 C is about to drop off on January first. That's the final payment. The 2013 A and twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, those are both related to the library bonds. So if you recall, the 2013 A was refunded earlier this year by the 2022 bonds to achieve a, a cost savings and the, at that time, the better interest rate environment. There's still two payments remaining on the 2013 because it made more financial sense to pay those directly rather than refund those. That's why you kind of see both of those issues for the next couple of years. And then on the bottom, same debt just shows which funds are repaying that debt. So out of the general fund, that's where the library bond money is coming from, straight out of the general fund. And then everything else comes out of the debt service fund. And because the city abates the property tax levies on that debt every year, it actually gets funded by a transfer in from the general fund. So ultimately, the general fund is paying for all of it.
Let's jump to Section Seven, Capital Project Funds. We've talked about these a couple of times. We did in August- We did in August. We did it again in October. Not anything really significant has changed. We've portrayed the, in terms of revenue, where the principal sources are, recurring sources are, I should say. And we're getting by, but this is another, I would consider, a structural issue where we are every year challenged by the increasing and growing list of both vehicle funding needs and street repair and improvement needs. And we had some conversation about this about nine months ago when we did our financial plan. The plan is, at this point, to have about $2.6 million dedicated for street maintenance. So let's talk about streets for now. For about 25 years until 2020, we were spending about $825,000, $850,000. So on average, some higher years, some not. But we have to do better because, just to keep a very modest, there's a scale of eight in the payment index that we have been following, which other communities follow, engineers, city engineers follow. Zach's not here tonight. He had to be someplace else. But we're at number eight, which is not the top, it's the bottom. $2.6 million puts us comfortably there. We'd rather be around five. But to do that, we have to come up with another million dollars. Now, we've incrementally been increasing. We, in 2019, the council did add some more local fuel tax to the pot. But this is not the best time to be increasing that, certainly. So no help there on the horizon. When it comes to vehicles, the cannabis tax returns or revenue that we hope to get in 2023 will help. But here it is, late November. Are we going to get 200,000? We don't know. Or we might get two, and then maybe that's a safer bet. We're working hard on it, but they're moving it. There are two interested parties. One in particular that's moving along has an architect involved and an engineer. We're making some progress, but, and has a contract on a parcel in our downtown area, not the Lincoln Highway corridor, but on Locust Street. So we're hoping that will help. There's also the possibility of some other, there's another federal pot out there that we're not, there isn't much conversation about. But there was a, what? Oh, pot, no pun intended. Sorry.
Good for you, sorry.
That's good.
Need a little load eater.
There might be, yeah, yeah, okay. I'll speed up. But anyway, we've talked about that. I'm not going to belabor that. Let's move into the water fund. Let's talk about our enterprise funds.
Before we get to the water fund?
Yes.
I want to give you guys a compliment. I thought the presentation you made about the road conditions and taking care of the roads, that was in the transmittal letter on pages 13 and 14. That was excellent.
Thank you. Well, I was hoping that the public would see that because we get a lot of calls all year round. When are you going to come and do my street? Well, it's bad. We'd love to do it, but have you seen, you know, that doesn't sell. Nobody wants to hear that, you know, not mine. So we can fall back on that. Now, we're going to do that, we're getting some help to revise our pavement condition index charting, but we need some grant money for that. The local metropolitan authority for that kind of funding, our DSATs is the acronym for it, is going to be paying for that. And we're sure that'll happen in '23. It was supposed to happen in '22, but the money didn't come from the state sources. Water fund, kudos and compliments again to some far-thinking council members, FAC members back in 2016, 2017 for seeing that, well, you know, streets are crumbling and other things are going. But we have user fees, water fees, which are holding their own. The demand was at that point pretty stable, and the revenue was sufficient to carve out some part of an annual increase. And so a courageous move is taken to say, well, your water bill's going to go up a little bit for the next four years. And since then, it's gone up a little bit, and it does every year. And it's pegged to inflation now. Although the council has the ability, and this goes back to a year ago, to have a conversation about it. It's not an automatic thing. Doesn't all of a sudden end up on a bill because of some administrative work. And this year, we did actually back up. So we went to three and a half percent instead of, at the time, it would have been eight percent, which would have been burdensome for many of our families in our community and businesses, too. But, so that carve-out is paying for some substantial infrastructure improvements on the water side. And we're better for it. It's easy at this juncture to look back and say, boy, that was great. It didn't come without some angst and sweat, I'm sure, at the time. But thank you for that.
I think the pages you're referencing, Bill, are 210 and 211. 210 shows the year-over-year increase in that the rates and what amount was going into the operations fund versus the water capital fund. And then on 211, it goes through kind of a detail of what projects were completed with that revenue and what tentative projects in '23 will be completed.
Big-ticket items are always the wells and towers and such. But there's every year a certain amount of underground. If you were driving around this weekend in the city of DeKalb, you would have seen three main, three main breaks, I think. And we have a terrific, small, but terrific and very responsive team of three or four that just show up. And as soon as there's, the police department gets a call about water running down the street, and they go out and investigate it, they're all over it. So can't ask for more from the water department in that respect. Airport Fund is also an enterprise fund. Some nice pictures here of big jets. We don't get them every day. They guzzle gas, which is good. We're working with our airport manager, with the airport advisory board and the council to augment the revenues. We are, a lot of our teehanger leases have, had not been upgraded in a lot of years. So we have a working group of some pilots, some of our local pilots, and some of our staff who are in ultimate favor, who are working out some changes in leases that will be modest, but will make us competitive, not more than competitive. And next year, hopefully, the solar field is up and running, and that will generate about 82,000 more per year that we're not seeing now. And we have to be aggressive in marketing ourselves, too. We're considering some splashy, hopefully successful consumer-driven activities at the airport. More to follow. Some unique activity that will bring in crowds. And so we're not talking about airshows. So...
It's an understatement.
Yeah. Yeah.
It'll be great, though.
Yeah. So refuse and recycling fund, that basically, as you can see on page 218, that is, you know, basically a wash. We plan to balance the spending with almost to the penny, the revenues that come in. And we're, it's a good value considering what is involved here and that none of us want to do it. So we pay people at a pretty good price, pretty good, meaning pretty economical price to come in and do that, refuse removal and recycling for us. Internal Service Fund, section nine, it starts on page 219. Our comp and health insurance fund. Today, a little late in the game, but we got our renewal notice. And you haven't seen it yet. But we're going to look at it. We're going to pair it out. It's a little bit more than what we thought. There's two types of cost increases that we're looking at on the liability insurance side. One is cyber insurance, which has gone up dramatically in the marketplace. And so these tap again as much as we've been paying for a number of years. And also, we did something, and Andy Rybick is very helpful in this. For a lot of years, we had a structure of insuring our buildings less than our, what was it, Michelle? Less than our...
They had that in excess for over 10 years.
So they hadn't gone up. And we weren't, we weren't anywhere near what the market values were for, and we weren't looking for replacement value. So, you know, just, there are some things that could burn down and we'd walk away. But most things are precious enough to us, particularly in terms of operations, that they have to be well-insured because we're the only police force in town, and fire force, firefighters in town, and public works in town. So we have to have a home, homes. So we were going to have to up the annual payment for those services. But we'll, we're not talking about hundreds of thousands over, but we're talking about 10,000, 20,000, maybe, that we didn't anticipate in here. But we're going to go back and forth with the, the rep was in today, and we'll see where we are. Correct? Is that fair to say?
And to just elaborate a little bit more, if the, for your benefit, the way the internal service funds are set up is that they're paying premiums for those health insurance and for workers' comp and liability, and they're being funded by other funds, essentially. So the general fund kicks money in, water fund, airport fund, and transportation. That's where the revenues come from. So there's a couple charts on page 220 and 221, which just show, here's the outgoing expenses out of the funds, and here's the incoming revenue to these internal service funds that offset that. And one of the items in the city's fund balance policy is to maintain certain levels of reserves in these two funds. So for the workers' comp and liability insurance fund, there's a target of a million-dollar reserve balance, which, the way this is designed to go at the end of 2023, it's going to be 1,010,000. So we're right there at that number. And then on the conversant, on the health insurance fund, the policy is to maintain about one month of health insurance premiums through our IPBC. It's the Health Insurance Cooperative we're part of. And that equates to about 500,000. So at the end of 2023, we're targeting to be about 597. So we're at maintaining both of those fund balance metrics for those funds.
Okay. Finally, one thing that you will see when you visit this a week from now. There's an appendix every year. We have our financial policies, our performance measures, our glossary, and our chart of accounts.
Pench funds and all?
Oh, yeah, I guess. Well, yeah, I skipped over police and fire pension. Did you want to talk about that again? I'm happy to.
You mean the crushing obligation?
Yeah, that one.
I'm going to end on that note.
That's three words, yeah.
Has it changed? Is it getting better?
No.
Okay.
I think we're fluent.
No, I wish, it's not. 1.7 this year is, 1.7 million is the gap. Last year was under 1.4. Next year, probably 2.1 million. That's beyond every dollar that we get from property tax. And by the way, when you get your bill in the spring, you'll see, you got those two lines, one that says pensions, and then top one just says, you know, general. And for the last two years, I've been, I get calls for a week. You guys forgot to raise taxes for your operations. No, we didn't. It's just we don't do anything for general operations. It all goes into pensions. And we're alone in that, as you look up and down that list. Oh, okay. Is there anything else you wanted to say about pensions?
No.
Thank you.
Unless anybody has a question.
All right. So I was just trying to say, the reason the appendix is not here. So the chart of accounts hasn't changed much. We're, this is always the last thing we do. The financial policies have not changed in any substantive way. But a new set of eyes here came in and saw, wait a minute, we don't even have that fund anymore. Little details, and we try to be sound in our details. We used to do, our annual financial report used to be called the CAPR. That's what we called it. Now it's called the ACTR. The, yeah.
Annual numbers.
The annual comprehensive financial report instead of the comprehensive annual financial report.
Much clearer now.
What's that?
It's much clearer now.
I think so. So little things like that. I wanted to get them in for tonight, but we just, performance measures is the only thing, really, that we're, and I'm glad we're taking the time to do this. Just wasn't ready for primetime tonight. It'll be done. We'll send them to you so you can see. Okay. They're very close. But they couldn't go out last Thursday. Sorry. So that's where we are. You know, a couple hundred million dollars under your charge. A good part of that, the first hundred million is the pension fund.
Finance, council, questions, comments? Tom?
Couple of comments. First of all, from an overall perspective, it's a major step up. The documentation, the write-up, quality review. We have policies, many of which were adopted through the FF, through the finance department and written, drafted really from other communities when we contemplated and decided we needed some policies that put some structure around our financial condition, our goal of 25% fund balance, really basic things. A debt policy that made some sense. And it's refreshing to see someone test it against those constraints that were adopted. Pretty basic stuff that we don't often talk about over the years of more serious problems, I guess. But a real step forward, and to us, to addition of finance, real positive step. From an overall perspective, my comments would really go back to page 11. And if you go back to page 11 and look at the five-year forecast, that's, to me, another major step forward. We wanted to talk about sensitivity. We wanted to talk about what impacts our decisions have long range. And you can see the trend overall. But for our federal funds, we'd be in deficit this year and every year going forward. We have a nice fund balance to work off, and some of that could be applied to capital needs if necessary. So again, just to be well-aware in your consideration on a go-forward basis, if there is a recession, and you look back over the history, and you look at years where recessions occurred, revenue streams were impacted in the neighborhoods of 5% to 10%. So you have variable revenues from the state, state income tax, sales tax, those portions of your revenue streams that are variable can drop 5% to 10%. So that's roughly 30 million of your revenue stream. Five percent's a million and a half. If you lose a million and a half in revenue streams due to a recession in the next 12 months, you want to be just aware of that, as to what the implications are. And look at the history and see that we've actually had to go through this. Having a good fund balance is certainly a positive to being able to address that. And I know my own personal feelings are that the revenue streams are pretty conservative in longer-range plans. But if a recession comes, it could be less than that. As to the tax levy, we talked in general about a recommendation. We've never done anything formally. But the percentage of new construction was at about 4%. And the original tax levy increase was about 4%. And that all made sense to me. that all made sense to me. Now we're looking at 5.7%. And the increase, we agreed, at 780 million, so that's about 5.7% coming from new construction. And that would be available to you with absolutely no impact to the homeowner. On a go-forward basis, I think that's something we're thinking about or and/or adopting, is you want to keep your rates going down and the homeowner whole.
Tom, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I don't know how you could say that, because if you look at what I handed out, this was where we were when we met in October. So we were 4%, Tom.
Right.
And so, or I should say, this is where we are in the, in terms of where we, what we're recommending now. And we were a little higher. We were about 9.923, something like that. But I took your suggestion, and that second page, the inside page, shows where we'd be if we just flatlined at 0.98612. And you're going to pay more tax. I don't know how to calculate it any other way.
I saw that number, and we'd look at it. I mean, the original number was 28 million that we had. That was about 4%. And that lined right up with, you know, basically a flat 6.7.
Well, I'm trying to be transparent here, and I, if you can think of another, a better way to show it, but this goes right down into the smallest house, you know, pocketbook. Okay.
That was my only other observation. And it's great, obviously, to have the new construction there available and allowing the tax, the homeowner really to benefit by the 6.7% inflation increase, the value of their home went up, and they're not going to pay anything for that, and they're going to rate now by that or a little more than that now. So that's positive for the homeowner.
So, council? Anyone else?
I just have one more thing.
Yes, city manager.
So you already get this about your city manager. I didn't come back here to balance the books. I came back here because I thought DeKalb had upside. This was long before anybody knew anything about Facebook and Farrar and the rest of that. I got tired of, and what really prompted me to come back here was what was happening with the Tiff District. I thought that was a scandal, and so did a lot of other people, by the way. And I thought, this is the place I came to in 1970. It was going to be my future, and it's been my future. It's always been. And I thought, we're always going to have ups and downs in the business cycle. We'll have recessions. We'll have boom periods. We've got two structural problems we talked about tonight, but the biggest one for the general fund, obviously, is the pension. But we can fix that. It can be fixed. But what we needed to do here for about three or four years was to buy time. And God bless us, Facebook came into our lives, Farrar came into our lives. Nobody knew that. Nobody could take claim for, you know, say, oh, I saw that. No, nobody could. Nobody knew. But we sure tried. We just went out and banged the drum, and we got it. And one thing I think we have to know is that we can't go back on the staffing we have. That doesn't mean, and look what we did in COVID. When we had no other choices, everybody gave back their wage increases and salary increases, and we froze positions, and we did all that stuff. But if you go back to 2002, you go back to 60 or 59 police officers, how many in-street, Andy?
77.
We're impoverishing ourselves, because these bad times don't last if we got willpower, creativity. And so whenever I do a budget every year, this, this is an experience, six months of it, right? Dreadfully tired of the numbers. This last weekend, I should have been doing more prep and more homework. I just, I couldn't, I couldn't do it. But to me, the exciting thing about you and you, and these people in particular, is what we're doing to raise hope, to raise expectations, to raise a future. And if we can't do that, it's like that thing I showed you the other night. We can be very successful at mediocrity. I don't want to be. I think we need to be a lot more successful at excellence and keep reaching for it. So, sorry, I had to say that because, I mean, we're going into another budget year. I don't know if I'll do another budget. I'm not making an announcement. But if this is the last one, I think it's showing that we have promise, and I'm happy for it. Enough.
I think part of what I'm hearing, I mean, this budget is still accounting for 2.5 million dollars in roads. I'm just going to use rough numbers. 70 police officers, a fully-staffed fire department, fully, fully-staffed street department. Sorry, Andy, I know you could probably argue that one. But your projections are including all those expenses.
That's right.
And when we're faced with a real challenge in the future, we're also faced with other levers that we can pull to get leaner, reduce expenses, while the whole time being sitting on top of a brilliant fund balance as well. But I do believe, downstate, something has to be done with the police and fire pension. Bill's been going downstate to speak with them. I was just speaking with one of our state senators. I just got appointed to the I M L Board. That's going to be my number-one thing with the I M L Board, is what are we going to do about police and fire pensions? This is a reality for so many other municipalities that something is going to get done at the state. If they don't.
We're much better shape than 80% of those other municipalities.
Yes.
Correct.
Much better shape.
Absolutely.
They can't even provide services anymore.
But we could appeal, sorry, now we're going down, but we could appeal our state legislative friends, because eventually, they have to pay for those towns that are getting, you know, you can't go bankrupt in Illinois. So, you know, there are a lot of towns, central Illinois, southern Illinois, absolutely, Tom, that are on the precipice. I mean, they, so now the state police are doing their policing, and they are, I don't know what they're doing for fire departments, frankly. I don't know.
But I think that's important to call out. I mean, we know it's there. We know it's a reality, and it's going to be incredibly impactful when you look at it going forward. But we're also not just sitting here waiting for it to happen. I mean, Bill's actively being involved. I'm actively involved to figure out how we can have a voice to affect change at the state level, to get them to finally wake up and make a decision and move that ball forward for the good of the whole entire state, as well as the good of DeKalb. So we're in a, we're in a, I mean, in so many ways, a great spot. I mean, we got real challenges ahead of us. We can't take our eye off the ball. We can't keep doing a bunch of things in parallel. But, boy, is it good to be in a situation like we are right now financially at the city of DeKalb. For me, I got the budget, and it's kind of like, eh, I can't wait to read it. Which, me reading a budget, I don't usually think that. But what I, what I do love about what the city manager created and what our finance director, Dipman, created, the narrative. It is really cool to go through and read about what's going on in the fire department. And, oh, yeah, that's right. I forgot. We got that new engine. That's really cool. And we brought on all those extra firefighters, and we increased the safety of our men in blue? What, men in red? I'll call them men in red. But then also, you can read about the police department, and, oh, yeah, that's right. We got the body cams, and, and we've got new officers. And I love, you can see the numbers. And when I was on the Finance Advisory Commission years ago, we were literally, I think, just printed out the fund balance, hand it to us in a three-ring binder, and, okay, tell us what you want us to do. And it's like, there was no way to interpret it unless you were actively involved in city government to be able to understand it. What you all produce is something that we can read, which is going to help us make better decisions, but also the public to read from a transparency perspective. And then you did it while increasing operations, lowering taxes for the individual homeowner. I mean, this, this, this document that's before us is, quite frankly, a work of art. And I know it's years in the making, especially for you, Bill. But the time and energy that all department heads put into this, as well as our finance director and the city manager, can't thank you enough. It's a great document. It really helps us do our job even better. So nice work.
Thank you.
Bill, I've been on this committee for some years, and I know in the past, before you came, it's since we would get numbers, and then we'd find out the next few are inaccurate. And so I've seen a general improve, a great improvement. Actually, this is the first time I've read through this. I feel like there's a sigh of relief, because this feels like there's more options and hope. And obviously, we've had some, a lot of positive things happen, but I always appreciate the narrative you give us. And I was going to say thank you to you and Ruth, but it sounds like you did, you did the majority of this. So I appreciate it. I feel like it's gone nothing, it's gotten nothing but better. So.
Thank you.
Yes, Alderman, Marcy?
When I was campaigning a year or so ago, and I would knock on people's doors and ask, you know, anything that I could do or, you know, if you elected me. And then I always left it. I said, and I'll give you a piece of advice. Go online and read the city budget. And you could see people's faces like, why the heck would I do that? And I said, because any citizen can open this up and read exactly where DeKalb is at. And that is what is so cool. And I don't think many municipalities have that. And that was, every door I rang, that was the thing I left them with, go online and read the budget. So thank you for providing that for all of the citizens, not just who's here.
Well said.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no other questions or comments, we can move on to Agenda Item E, adjournment. All right. City Council adjourns first, according to Secretary. All right, I take a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Burbick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. City Council is adjourned.
Do I appear to adjourn?
I'll second you.
Thank you. Alderman, please.
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah.